Good evening, everyone. Before we gavel in, we're going to make a few remarks because we want to catch everyone while they're here. As you may or may not know, tonight is our last meeting with Beverly Wright, our president, and Jim Posh, our other board member. They are completing their second terms of office, which is eight years of service, and we would like to acknowledge them. That's a lot of time, and I have something I'm going to read. I hope I can get through it without getting emotional. Beverly and Jim, I want to thank you for your service on the board. Thank you for supporting me as a candidate, a colleague, and a friend. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve with both of you, and I have benefited from your knowledge, and I appreciate your deep commitment to our students, our staff, and our community. We've been through a lot together, at least in the six years I've been on the board, and through it all, I knew I could count on both of you to help us make the best decisions based on the information we had available to us in the moment. And while I can say we haven't always agreed, I've always been able to count on you to listen and respect everyone's opinions and to work so we can all find consensus. You helped create a culture of trust, and that is very rare in elected bodies. And that has made it a pleasure to serve on this board with both of you. And I just want to tell you, I've learned so much from both of you, and I wish you both well, and I look forward to keeping in touch. And enjoy your newfound time on Tuesday evenings. I'm going to miss you very much.
Yes.
And I know my colleagues have things that they want to say, and then we have some tokens of appreciation to give you.
I didn't prepare any remarks, but Beverly and Jim, the time we have spent together on this board is incredibly memorable. We have worked very hard. You have taught me so much and helped me focus my thinking and remember how difficult it is to keep our students in number-one position in all decision-making, because there's so many outside forces that are always trying to compete for attention. But you have always reminded me of the importance of our students and that, working together, we can get to where we want to be for them. Thank you for your time. It's been a privilege to work with you.
Sort of overarching ideas, things that have just come to my mind. I was telling Jody earlier today that I've had some pretty wet eyes today. It came to mind today that when the three of us joined the board, we didn't know what we didn't know. We had attended a lot of board meetings, and we knew the district. But what the two of you have given to us, the three of us, we will never be able to thank you. And I think the community owes you both such a great debt. Beverly, when I think of you, I think of institutional memory. You and I, as the Heights grads, this district means it's ours. Your family is local royalty. You are so expert and deeply invested in early childhood education, a genuine expert on the board in early childhood. Jim, when, you know, when the three of us joined, we convinced Jim at our first organizational meeting to take the helm and to lead the board as president, and thank heavens for you. You know, what people don't know is that Jim had had, has had a career of being, you know, an executive and running businesses, and he understands the importance of information and sharing information. And Jim insisted from day one that all of the information get dispersed among all of us so that we could all use all of the information that we could get in order to guide the district and to help the kids and to do the work of our taxpayers. And that was not always, that wide sharing of information was not always the norm, but Jim committed to it. And as Jody and Malia said, the words that I have are trust and collaboration. And that, for Jim, information was not power. Information was the ability to do good for our taxpayers, our kids, our staff. And so, the level of trust and that style of leadership has forever affected us, and I believe that the district and the community really benefited from it. So, you know, we are incredibly fortunate that we have two people who will sit in these seats next month. Gabe and Phil will be fantastic, and I'm very grateful for them. But, you know, I mean, we've been together through a lot. We've buried parents, and I am forever grateful.
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you. Well, I have a little something.
I'm going to present you with your gifts first.
It's not moving.
That's a good sign. No puppies. No puppies.
I feel okay with the puppies. Well, thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you all. I have a little something that I just want to read. Dear family, friends, colleagues, and board members, it is with much thought and contemplation that I write this to inform you that, as of tonight, I will no longer be serving as board president/member of the Cleveland Heights University High School District. While I am excited about the opportunities that await me in the future, it is with great sadness that I say goodbye. My time here has been marked by both challenges and triumphs, and I would cherish the many strong bonds I have made along the way. I began this term in 2014 with Dr. Felicia Ghul. I mention her because she has been a mentor and an inspiration throughout my entire term, along with many others. I also want to give special acknowledgements to the individuals in this district. Firstly, my board colleagues, Superintendent Kirby, and the powerful women and men in the administration. Secondly, the Cleveland Heights, University Heights students and parents. Your support has meant more to me than I can ever say. And developing community and relationships with you has been one of the supreme highlights of my term as board president. I would always be grateful for the opportunity I had to work with you and to learn from you. In the spirit of Kwanzaa, my favorite principle is Yuzima. It means building and maintaining our community together and making our brothers' and sisters' problems our problems and solving them together. I know that this principle is alive and well within our community, and I wholeheartedly believe that it will continue with or without me, because it's the beautiful people that we all are and the special community we have built together for each other and the future. Thank you all so much for choosing me. I appreciate you. I will miss you, and thank you.
Well, I initially thought we'd just sort of drift in the sunset, and that would be bad and no cake, but it's a little bit more than that. I have no prepared remarks except to thank this team. It's all about the team. It's about sort of the chemistry that a group has and how you can get things done together, because it's not about a single voice. It's about a bunch of equal voices. And there are seven people up here that we all work hard. And then we have people who work with this district, are committed to this district, our teachers, our administrators, and they're wonderful people with a heart of gold. But I don't think we would have been here today in this spot in this time without this team, and that's what I really appreciate. And you got two new team members coming in. It's going to be great, okay? It's going to be great, and I'm really looking forward to all the things that you guys could do to sort of top everything that this group has done, because that's how it works. You leave a place, you hope, in a little bit better spot than you came in. And I feel that way because of this team. I think we've all worked hard for it, so thank you for making that easy for me.
We are very lucky to have perhaps the best representative in the Ohio House of Representatives representing our district, Juanita Brent, and I am happy to say that she is here tonight, and I would like to give her the stage because I think she's got some things to say.
Can you speak in a mic? Use Dan's mic. Hi, everyone. My name is Juanita O. Brent. I just happen to be a state representative. I happen to be your state representative. For those who don't know me, hopefully you've seen a letter and a candy cane for me. Happy holidays. But this day is kind of bittersweet, and I'm going to just tell you, we are losing two awesome people. We're also gaining two good people, too, but we're losing two awesome people. And our president, as she is going out, I'm going to tell you how she first introduced herself to me over some food, not at a restaurant, but at her house, and she made every bit of it, the cornbread, the lima beans, the greens, the baked chicken. She laid it all out. I thought it was other people coming. It was just me. And as we talk about education, education is a family situation. This is a family story. We are all together here as family, so however we get together, and that is how our board president has treated it, like his family. So, thank you for letting me be a part of your family. Beverly and Jim, I could not, this experience of being a representative and Cleveland Heights and University Heights being added on to my district, I could not think of better people to have been serving with than you two. Being responsive to my emails, thank you, Jim, for responding to my emails. That means a lot, because I send a lot out, but I would not take that lightly. But I'm not going to read what's here from the state of Ohio, because nobody cares what's really on here. But the most important thing is that they get their flowers while they're still alive. So, what I need everybody to do tonight is to hug and love on them, because it's never easy to serve in the public. It's never easy to have what you do very public and all your actions going public going forward. But on behalf of the state of Ohio, and as I, as your representative, Juanita O. Brent, in sound mind and body, I want to present you this combination for your years of service here for the Cleveland Heights University High School Board. Thank you.
We want one last shot of the seven of us. Tall's in the back, not tall's in the front.
That would not be me in a dress. They've been rolling the whole time.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. We call to order the Cleveland Heights University High City School Board of Education meeting. Thank you for joining us. This is a regular meeting of the school board, and all items that will be discussed or voted on have been posted as required by state law. We are here to conduct the business of governing the district, to set goals, to hear reports from superintendent and treasurers, to approve budgets, contracts, and personal items, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the administration. Mr. Gaynor, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hines.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
I now turn the meeting over to superintendent for the awards and recognition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to begin the evening with a warm welcome for all of the student, group, staff, and family members here with us tonight. First in our awards and recognitions are fall athletes and coaches who are honored by the Greater Cleveland Conference. This is the district's first year in the GCC after many decades in the Lake Erie League. Our teams have done a phenomenal job representing Tiger Nation, certainly making a splash despite being the newcomers. So, when you hear your name, please come up to the front to receive your certificate and remain up front for a group photo at the end. Catherine Cavanaugh will be distributing the certificate, so you can just come to her. The first team we want to acknowledge is cross-country. Alex Burke was a top-10 finisher at the GCC meet and received the All-Conference Award. And the cross-country coach is Scott McNulty. The next team is boys soccer. The team advanced to the second round of playoffs, and five players received All-Conference or Honorable Mention awards. They are Neil Joshi, Gabe McKay, Harland Williams, Marcus Holland, and Austin Marbles. And the boys soccer coach, who I know is here today, so please come to the front, is Teshappel Motsami. If you could come to the front, please. Let's congratulate the boys soccer team coach. Is that the team? These are players?
Yeah.
Oh, come on up, guys. Thank you. All right. The girls soccer team also advanced to the second round of playoffs, and four players received All-Conference or Honorable Mention awards. They are, and please come on up as we say your names, Jane Mueller, Clara Walker, Otto Quinn, and Kaia Starr. Let's give them a round of applause, please. And the girls soccer coach is Pat Glaba. Two of our girls golf team members received All-Conference awards. They are Abigail Tish and Asanath King. And the girls golf coach is Fiona Connor. Oh, here's my sport. Three volleyball team members received All-Conference or Honorable Mentions from the GCC. They are Anna Caneely, Kamya McDonald, and Avery Kraft. The volleyball coach is Jasmine Harper. And last but not least, football. Our varsity team finished the regular season nine-and-one, clinching the title of Greater Cleveland Conference champion in their very first year. Then, they made it all the way to the regional semifinals, the farthest that the Tigers have ever gone in state playoff history, our 100-year playoff history. The GCC honored Heights running back Marquise Davis as a conference Offensive Player of the Year, and he also received the All-Ohio Offensive Player of the Year for Division I. So, Marquise, if you could please come up. And the following players received All-Conference or Honorable Mention awards. John Gordon, Mackay Webb, Brandon Caesar, Jason Owens, Albert Green, Rodney Harris Jr., Emir Atkins, and Abdu D.A. And we also want to honor head coach Max Stevens for being named both the GCC Coach of the Year, along with his coaching staff, but also the Coach of the Year for Division And finally, as we start to gather to take the picture, I want to recognize our athletic director, Joe Demato, for successfully leading his department, coaches, and athletes throughout this transition to the GCC. I'm sure that our GCC competitors are very, very happy to have us in their league, and we are just so excited about all of the achievements of our athletes across all sports. So, guys, we're going to ask you guys just to come towards the front, and then we're going to take a group picture. winners. Continuing on with great student accomplishments, we have invited another group of student winners to be here tonight. I'm going to give the floor to Dan Hines, who serves on the high school's foundation board of trustees, to recognize our Holiday Card Contest winners.
Thank you, Superintendent Kirby. The district, in partnership with the Heights Schools Foundation, hosted our third annual Holiday Card Contest this fall. Students from across Tiger Nation, from preschool through 12th grade, were encouraged to craft an original piece of holiday-spirited or winter-themed artwork for a chance to be featured as the cover of the 2023 Superintendent's Holiday Card. We received dozens of creative submissions from students of all ages. And before we bring up our award winners, we wanted to take a look and to share a video compilation of this year's submissions.
I particularly love the one that was celebrating snow days. So, students, parents, staff, and community members had the opportunity to vote online to select a community choice winner, and Superintendent Kirby selected the top three overall. The contest winners will be awarded a $50 cash prize or the priceless Tiger Nation swag bag, all courtesy of the Heights Schools Foundation. For those of you who are not aware, I would just like to remind people that the Heights Schools Foundation is our alumni association. They do amazing work pumping lots of money into fund individual teachers' progress, and all of that money actually impacts our classrooms. So, as you think about your end-of-the-year giving, I would encourage you to check out Heights Schools Foundation. So, students, when I announce your name, please come up front to receive your prizes along with a print of your artwork. If there are art teachers and after-school program coordinators are here, please come up with them as well. As we know, many of you set aside time for your students to create their submissions and continuously provide them with artistic guidance. Please remain up in front for a group photo. So, congratulations go to our community choice winner, Kiara Norris. Kiara is a fourth grader at Oxford and recipient of the Tiger Nation swag bag. Her art teacher is Ms. Carrie De Prima, and Ms. Erin Hill is the 21st Century Grant Coordinator at Oxford. Bravo to both. In third place, we have Evelyn Jamison, a ninth grader at Heights High, recipient of a $50 cash prize. In second place, carpooling must have been easy, is Hadley Jamison, an 11th grader at the Cleveland Heights High School, and recipient also of a $50 cash prize, just in time for holiday shopping. Hadley takes jewelry and metals class with Ms. Nancy Rich Drays and ceramics with Mr. Mark Baker. And for the overall card selection, congratulations to Indigo Jamison, fourth grader, Boulevard Elementary School, recipient of a $50 cash prize, and featured artist for the Superintendent's Holiday Card. Indigo's art teacher is Ms. Jessica Ballard. Special thanks again to the Heights Schools Foundation for sponsoring the winning prizes, and congratulations to our amazing Tigers. and congratulations to our amazing Tigers.[555.66][555.66][applause] This is great.
Get off my desk with this.
Finally, our Tiger Team Members of the Month for November. The CHUH staff members have been recognized by their peers and community members for going above and beyond to contribute to the culture of excellence in our district continuously. Your colleagues who nominated you for this recognition have shared these heartfelt words. From the Board of Education, Vanessa Bantam.[631.04][631.04][applause] Vanessa has a long record of being a dedicated hard worker for the district's students and fellow staff members. She is known for giving the people her very best. She has a talent that I will call a human GPS. She has the ability to drive a school bus and simultaneously help other drivers navigate the city turn by turn. From Boulevard Elementary School, Christina Norland.[660.12][660.12][applause] Christina is an outstanding school psychologist who is professional, highly intelligent, filled with true wisdom and understanding, and genuinely warm-hearted and caring. She welcomes all who seek her assistance. The students love her and are always excited to see her. Our staff looks up to Christina as a professional and friend. From Canterbury Elementary School, Marilyn Dos.[687.62][687.62][applause] Marilyn is our Nurse Pair Professional, who is kind and caring and goes above and beyond Band-Aids. If she notices a student seems down or distressed, she is there to discuss things with them and to be sure they leave her office feeling more comfortable about their situation. Canterbury is lucky to have her. From Delaw Options Center, Guy Bradshaw.[714.04][714.04][applause] Mr. Bradshaw is a dedicated member of our high school auto tech program. He plays a crucial part in creating a positive and inclusive learning atmosphere. He takes time to connect with each student on a personal level and actively supports students in their academic pursuits, providing guidance and a supportive presence. From Fairfax Elementary School, the Paraprofessionals of Fairfax, the entire group. So, if you are a paraprofessional at Fairfax, please come on up.[748.12][748.12][applause] So, I will share everyone's names. Cynthia Foster, Lanny Bishop, Alicia Vickers, DJ Battle, Larissa McKinney, Elliot Hill, Jada James, Kiara Nelson, Patrice Perry, Raquel Martin, Destiny Curtis, Ellisir Tripp, Deborah Howes, Kevin Davis, Loretta Brown, Barbara Heard, Erica Davis, Natalie Harris, Minnie Spoon, and Barbara Champion. Thank you for all that you do.[778.12][778.12][applause] If you could just stay on the side, because we're going to have everybody take a picture. From Garrity PD School, Amanda Blaze.[790.12][790.12][applause] Blaze is such a dedicated advocate and amazing teacher. She is always willing and able to lend a helping hand to other students who are not a part of her caseload. She treats all students like they are her own. Blaze has such patience and compassion for her students who have special needs, she truly has a heart of gold. From Heights High School, Samantha Green.[818.37][818.37][applause] Always goes above and beyond for her students and her coworkers to help in any way that she can. From Monticello Middle School, Makia Circe.[833.04][833.04][applause] Circe has gone above and beyond to support Monticello's efforts and partnering with families. She has been a nimble leader in supporting the school's national network of partnership schools, and most recently, she took on helping to rebuild the PTA. It is worth noting that she does it all with a warm enthusiasm. From Noble Elementary School, Jasmine Monroe.[860.75][860.75][applause] Jasmine is a true gem at Noble. She is compassionate about growing our first-grade scholars, collaborates and shares knowledge of the science of reading with our team, creating engaging lessons and inspiring me each day. Jasmine is our tech coach and has brightened up Noble by leading the Sunshine Committee. Noble is so lucky to have her. From Oxford Elementary School, Edie Fialla.[889.31][889.31][applause] Mrs. Fialla is an amazing support for our staff, students, and families. Mrs. Fialla comes to work each day focused on students' needs. She has worked closely with staff to provide students with the supports they need to access their education. Mrs. Fialla shares resources with staff and comforts students on a daily basis. From Roxborough Elementary School, Debbie Hirsch.[919.62][919.62][applause] Debbie took the most recent unit in wonders and made terrific connections to her IB unit. Having learned about monuments in ELA, Debbie expanded that reading to a research project involving the Cultural Gardens of Cleveland. The students then wrote persuasive essays to encourage people to visit their chosen garden. Thanks, Mrs. Hirsch, for engaging students beyond your four walls. And from Roxborough Middle School, Ryan Williams.[948.31][948.31][applause] Ryan is an excellent team leader. He is organized and thorough and is a fantastic teacher. His lessons are creative and interesting for students. I often will help students with their math work during our Rocks in Action period, so I can see firsthand that the work is challenging and creative for students. So, congratulations to our winners. We're going to take a group photo.
Thank you all.
Next, I am going to ask a high school senior. Oh, Lord, are you a senior, really? Nia Baker and junior Darian Baker for this month's Student Cadre Report.
Good morning, Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby, and Mr. Gaynor. My name is Nia Baker, and I am a senior at Heights High.
My name is Darian Baker, Jr., and I'm a junior at Heights High. As members of the Superintendent's Student Cadre, we are here to give a brief report about what's happening at Heights High. We are honored to be here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity. First, we would like to tell you about our athletic teams and provide an update about several upcoming events at Heights High. Boys' and girls' basketball both opened their early season with wins over rival Shaker as part of the Great Lakes Classic. Bowling, the bowling team rolled a perfect 300 in a Baker game against Brunswick. Brunswick, sorry. This feat has automatically qualified them for the national tournament. Bowlers include Kevin Clark, Gabe McKay, Marcus Holland, Tyler McCann, and Matt Kat Girls' 200 freestyle relay has set a new pool record. Members of the relay include Maddie Shoemaker, Sophie Mueller, Margot Burke, and Marley Hill. Goalie James Betty already has over 100 saves on the season. He can't, he current, his current save rate is over 85%. Boys wrestling competed in the Beat the Streets Tournament at Hope Academy in Chicago this past weekend. Overall, the team went four to one with victories over Elkin Hancock, St. Ignatius, Chicago, and John Adams. Girls' wrestling, Chelsea Gibson placed second overall, the Beat the Streets Tournament this past weekend.[1203.23][1203.23][laughter]
Here are a few important events that happened at Heights High. Junior Tamiya Christian won first place at the Poetry Out Loud Contest at the Maslin Museum on November 12th by reciting poems. First vote by Camilla Ayesha Moon in Alternative Names for Black Boys by Donaz Smith. She was named a Northeast Ohio Regional Semifinalist and will go on to compete at the Poetry Out Loud State Championship in Columbus in February 2024. Senior Johanna Carlisle and junior Emma Napure had pieces exhibited in the Otterbine University's 54th Annual Jury High School Art Exhibition. The AP Studio Art Students pieces are included with 63 other artworks by ninth through 12th grade students from across the state of Ohio and was selected by artist Chaz O'Neill. Updates for the month of December. Thirty seniors were admitted to Central State University and received 33,000 worth of scholarships at the high school's Instant Emissions Day on December 1st. The vocal music department, which I'm a part of, serenaded the community with songs of the season on December 8th with their winter concert. The barbershoppers gave a sneak peek of their repertoire before they traveled to the Big Apple in January for the Midwestern Midwinter Convention of the Barbershop Harmony Society. Today, Heights High celebrated our winter sports athletics and cheered them on for their upcoming season with a spirited pep rally. The Heights Community Scholarship Application is now open. Seniors received a Google Classroom invitation and must submit their applications by February The Heights CTE application is open for sophomores to apply to one of the two-year programs. Students can apply at heightscareertech.com until 5:00 PM on January 19th. Midterm exams for Heights High will take place this week, starting tomorrow, December 20th through Friday, December 22nd.
Next, I would like to talk about my experience as a student at Heights High School. In 2021, I was a freshman at Cleveland Heights High School. I was welcomed by Dr. McKinney, the head principal, Mr. Dubsky, my unit principal, and Ms. Hanson, my English teacher. All my teachers were extremely helpful and made sure I reached all my academic goals. If I didn't understand something, they would work with me after school, and Mr. Conrad Stewart would work with me during freshman seminar. Being in an environment where your teachers want you to succeed helps relieve the pressure and helps me focus on my studies. All of my teachers want me to win, which makes me feel comfortable approaching them to ask questions. I am extremely grateful for all my educators at Heights High School.
I have attended schools in the Cleveland Heights community from K through 8th grade and decided to return back in 2022. Heights High provides an inclusive environment that makes every student feel as though they belong. My teachers encourage me to do my best and not only tell me that they want me to succeed, they show me how much they want me to succeed by opening up their classrooms for me to come to ask questions if I'm unclear about an assignment. As a senior who's looking to attend college next year, I feel prepared, confident, and ready to take on this new challenge. I am grateful for my former principal, Dr. McKinney, and my current head principal, Dr. Towns, and all of the educators at Heights High School. All of them have made a tremendous impact on my life.[1451.44][1451.44][applause]
Thank you. This is our second set of siblings in the Superintendent's Cadre. So, I think it's such a wonderful cadre that the members want their siblings to join. So, I appreciate you guys sharing this evening. Before I close out, I did want us to take a moment of silence to recognize the life of Wontez Anderson. Wontez was a student at Roxborough Middle School who passed recently. We have all been supporting the school and grieving together as we have really tried to process this unthinkable loss. So, I ask that everyone close their eyes and continue to send prayers to the friends Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Kirby. Okay, now, we're going to have a statement from the audience. The Board asks that you please refrain.
School Spotlight first. Oh, School Spotlight, sorry. Options.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's my fault. We will next move to our School Spotlight Showcase. So, I'm going to ask Dr. Williams and his team to come up.
I'm Dr. Williams, principal of the Delaw Center, where we have the options program and our Tiger Virtual Academy. And tonight, I have staff members from Tiger Virtual Academy and the options program that will speak to you a little bit about the incentives we have around academic achievement and attendance, and they'll also talk about a couple of partnerships that we've been able to cultivate with our communities and school and the Cleveland Cavaliers. I have Mr. Gustafson, who's a teacher for Tiger Virtual Academy. Also have Ms. White, who's a teacher at the options program, and Kristen Campbell, who's our school social worker. What, Mr. Gustafson?
Hello, my name is Paul Gustafson. I am one of the high school teachers at Tiger Virtual Academy. PBIS is different for Tiger Virtual Academy or TVA. Since our students are only virtual, we created, we need to create a way to celebrate their success virtually. The question was, how do we celebrate students' achievement in a virtual environment? So, what we came up with was, we have four criteria for our students to succeed in. PBS rewards are given to students who meet or exceed the given four criteria. Attendance achievement, which is students who meet or exceed their daily hours. Honor roll, merit roll, most improved student, and this is an opportunity to recognize students who are most improved but do not necessarily meet the other criteria. We also have TVA Student of the Month. The students who qualify then have their names put into a Google Slide presentation, and we create a video and add a little celebratory music. Mrs. Underhyal and I read what they have accomplished and then email out a link of the video to the families. That video is not available right now, but we'll see. The Students of the Month are also recognized in the weekly newsletter. This is a great opportunity to celebrate our outstanding TVA students.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I am Kristen Campbell, and every minute counts. The options program highlights the importance of attendance every day. However, on Fridays, I have my pom-pom, and we individually recognize students by going to each classroom for the attendance for the week, so it's perfect attendance for that entire week. We define perfect attendance not just by showing up, but showing up on time. Students who have made improvement in their attendance are also acknowledged at that time. Every Friday, we provide PBIS incentives, which allows students who have perfect attendance to choose an item from our PBIS store. We also recognize and celebrate Students of the Month. Our Student of the Month has great attendance and is making academic progress. Not only is a Student of the Month acknowledged by the options staff and students, however, a positive phone call is also made to the parent or guardian of the student to acknowledge their success. This year, we had the opportunity to step it up a bit and foster a partnership with the Cleveland Cavaliers, and Ms. White will elaborate on that partnership.
Thank you. So, we had the great opportunity. So we had the great opportunity to form a partnership with the Cleveland Cavaliers. I wanted to start off by thanking Yvonne Brown and Guest Relations and the whole Cavs organization for our Cavs swag bags. Um, and also thank Greg Cameron of Cameron Travel for donating the game tickets for our raffle. So we have a slideshow going there. You can kind of see our experience, uh, when we were able to take our winners to the Cavs game on November the twenty-eighth for the Cavs versus the Hawks game. So we had four tickets. Um, the way the students were able to win is they had to have, uh, perfect attendance for the whole month of, of November. Um, so students who, um, had perfect attendance, every single student received something. That's our swag over there. We had T-shirts, the towels, uh, the basketball stress balls. Um, every student that had perfect attendance received something. But we had a grand drawing and our two winners for AM was, uh, well, our one winner for AM was Zaraya Burks. And then our PM winner was Avery Ward. And each person was able to bring a family member along with them as well. Our, uh, students, well, our community and school site coordinator, Erica Jackson, who couldn't be here this evening. Erica and I attended the game, um, and also through her program, she was able to buy their refreshments and some other items from them from the, uh, gift shop to really make it something they would never forget and experience they would never forget. And there was a lot of excitement behind this, just the possibility of winning. Our students were really excited about it. We were going from room to room with the pom-poms, really, you know, pumping it up. And it really ended up being a, a great ex- great experience for everyone. So we plan to do it again, uh, next semester. Our students are already excited about it and we expect it's gonna be a, a successful event again, so let's go Cavs.
Before you go, could I ask a quick question? Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Um, last year we heard that, that, uh, some families were having a hard time logging in to TVA. Is that still the case or has that been?
That's been rectified as far as I know.
Good.
Yeah, we haven't had any problems with that. Um, and I don't know exactly what the problem was. I was with elementary.
Got it.
But I know that there, as far as I know, everybody's, has, has an opportunity to get on twenty-four seven.
Okay, good. We haven't, I haven't heard anything this year. I just wanted to double check.
Excellent.
Appreciate it.
Well, if you do, email me and I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's a statement from the audience. I'm gonna read this statement and then I'll call your name to come up. The board asks that you please refrain from mentioning specific students or employees by name in your comments. If your comments involve a student or an employee, the board asks that you please not address the individual by name. We ask that you remain cognizant that we are in an open meeting and possibly in the presence of students. Also, please limit your comments to four minutes, three minutes. Three minutes, after three minutes, the microphone will be muted. And the first, uh, individual is Nia Baker.
Well, that was one of our students. She spoke already. That was our student.
Oh.
Yeah, she put her name down.
All right.
Even though she would, right, it's okay.
Um, how about Duncan Bailey Junior? Are they just sign, are these students that just signed?
These could be really valuable autographs. We gotta hang on to this.
Yeah.
When you consider some of the kids who were here today.
Quontez Baker, all of these are Bakers? Okay, I guess we have no one that's.
All right.
All right, we're moving right along. Okay, next, can I get an approval for the consent agenda?
I motion that we consider the consent agenda.
I second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes. Any discussion?
Okay, now we'll have the superintendent's report.
All right, I will, I can do it, Caitlin. Please. All right. So I am pleased to present the superintendent's report. Um, this represents work that has happened, uh, for the most part in the month of November since our last board meeting. Uh, first, on December first, we did have a student cadre meeting at Roxborough. Uh, there we met with students to discuss, uh, things happening in the district, things happening within their school, some of their recommendations and suggestions. Um, at this student, the students discussed academic supports and some ideas and suggestions around, uh, college and career readiness information. On November seventh, we had our annual Staff Professional Development Day. Uh, this is a conference-style professional development day where staff are able to se- to select sessions based on their individual interests in student achievement, climate, differentiation, equity, emotional support, safety and technology, and many other items. A special thanks goes out to Dr. Gould and the Ed Services Team for coordinating this day. We held our district leadership team meeting on November twenty-ninth. Um, that, during that meeting, we focused specifically on the benchmark assessment results from the fall in ELA and math and quarter one social studies and science assessment results. DLT members engaged in discussion and activity to support using those results. And we also looked at our district-wide MTSS strategic approach to receive feedback from school staff and school leaders. Also under Goals One and Two, our Director of Principal Leadership and Development held PBIS student outcome meetings in the month of November with our elementary and middle school principals. During these meetings, principals review their PBIS data in regards to reducing out-of-school suspensions from the previous year. This meeting is guided by the state's PBIS goals for reducing out-of-school suspensions and also, uh, the district's focus on that target as well. We also, in the middle of November, had our November Principals Meeting. There, the focus was on, uh, thinking classrooms and mathematics, again, looking at fall benchmark readiness results, the implementation of the district, um, ELA curriculum, student goal setting, and instructional coaching tied to OTAS. Under, uh, College Credit Plus, during quarter one of this year, we had two hundred and thirty-four students enrolled in a CCP course. This includes thirty-one middle school students in the robotics course, thirty-three ninth graders in the associate's pathway with Tri-C, eighty-two students taking college composition, and sixty-seven students taking a CCP course through the Kenyon Academic Partnership. All of these courses offer credits that are guaranteed to transfer to any two- or four-year public college in Ohio. And I want to thank Bob Swaggart for his leadership here. We had a great day today, uh, for the second time kicking off the Tri-C partnership and also celebrating Gear Up. So we're excited for the upcoming CCP meeting in January. Uh, we also, uh, concluded the Adams Family, a spooky coming-of-age story, November third, fourth, fifth, tenth, and eleventh at Heights High. It was a great success. And we want to thank all of the students, the staff, the volunteers, the parents for making these great performances occur. We did hold a coffee with the superintendent, board president, and PTA, so this is kind of co-sponsored by three entities. That was on November ninth. And during that conversation, we talked a lot about cyber safety, um, online, in particular ways we can help parents, um, support their students around positive and safe engagement, um, in social media. And so out of that conversation, we have planned to have some parent information sessions on cyber safety that will be a series held both January seventeenth and January thirty-first, and we'll be sending more information about those out this week. We also have our Black History Month Planning Committee that, uh, that committee has been meeting since the beginning of the year. We are planning a district-wide Black History Month celebration on February twenty-fourth from two to five PM at Cleveland Heights High School. We also are the recipients of two supports around mental health and social emotional health for our students. MyCOM will be funding additional programming to support social emotional learning and mental health support for students. Um, right now, both existing and new partners will be delivering programming. And the Heights Schools Foundation received a targeted grant to support additional mental health interventions and supports that will be provided as a part of the Metro Health School-Based Health Program. So we thank the foundation and that donor for their great generosity there. We've also been working very hard on our annual updates, uh, for families. So we have a, have had a pretty, uh, big push in getting these updates, um, submitted by our parents. We are now at about sixty percent of our families having completed this update, and we continue the outreach. Um, one nice, uh, result of this push is the fact that we now have eighty-four percent of our families connected to Infinite Campus. So that's the, for sure, the highest number I'm sure we've ever had. Um, and I want to thank both Caitlin Kavanaugh, Mary Piggott, for, uh, their efforts in this area, because it has been a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, work. And, uh, we do have mail-in texts, nudges going out to families, uh, this month and over the course of the year, just to remind them of where they are with their chronic absenteeism. So we'll have specific targeted nudges going to those who have chronic absenteeism at five percent or higher. November was, uh, the month where we s- we celebrated National School Psychologist's Week. That's November sixth through the tenth. So thank you to our school psychologists for all that they do for our students. And then under Goal Four, we are in the, in the midst of planning to really focus on recruitment and retention. A meeting was held on November thirtieth with building principals. And at that meeting, we discussed recruitment and retention practices. Principals reviewed best practices to attract talent, shared ideas on how to streamline the interview process and secure the best candidates, and reviewed upcoming staffing dates. That meeting was facilitated by Dr. Lombardo. Um, and we have a partnership with an outside firm, um, Insight, that's supporting us with this. So, coming up, we do have winter recess, December twenty-fifth through January fifth, as I mentioned, um, the cyber safety symposium, those two dates in January, and our district-wide Black History Month celebration on February twenty-fourth. That concludes my report. And any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Um, do we have any numbers on the out-of-school suspensions? Do we know?
I can tell you that we have a twenty percent reduction compared to last year.
Ooh, excellent.
And our goal was fifteen percent reduction.
Okay.
I don't have an exact number.
So that, I mean.
But we are meeting.
That's, that's a plenty good number, thank you.
Yeah, we're mea- we are meeting our goal there.
Okay, that's terrific. Um, do we as a board need to pass a resolution to recognize Black History Month in February? We did that last year.
Yeah, we flew the flag.
In order to fly the flag.
Right, we did that.
I think we put that in the soup's powers to, I don't, if I recall, and maybe we've got somebody who can look at policy. If I recall, we, we granted you the ability to make that decision without our approval.
On the?
On, on flying the flag.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cool.
And we did it last year.
Yes.
But last year was the first time that we had a whole process, and I'm just trying to follow up on that. Thank you. That, those were my only two questions.
Next, we're going to have the reading.
Oh, policy. That's Lombardo, our policy readings.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight we are, um, having the third reading of our Policies Group B. Uh, this is the third time I'm bringing it forward to the board. Uh, tonight we would ask for action on these policies. Uh, all edits and information that have been given to me have been updated and the, uh, final policies are there in, um, uh, on board docs. So are there any questions or comments?
I would like Mr. Gaynor to explain to us, um, the change to the Board of Revision complaints and counter complaints, because every time I think I understand it, it just eludes my grasp.
And I can, uh...
Sixty-two forty. And I know that there's been change in Columbus about this one, which is why I can never quite put my thumb on it.
Well, the gist, uh, the gist of it is that we, um, that complaints and counter complaints now, it used to be that you would just grant me the authority to work on your behalf or, you know, have me and your legal counsel work on your behalf to either, you know, deal with the complaints or counter complaints. Now there's actually a, a process that's hap- that has to happen, uh, that you see that's in this policy, um, based on the changes that have happened in the legislation. Um, you know, where there are, where, where we're still only, um, uh, filing original complaints against commercial property, not residential, uh, but that if there, if, if it meets certain thresholds, then we have to actually bring the complaint before you, uh, for you to. The, the legislature basically wanted to make it difficult for school districts to file complaints. There's a window of time for you to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and counter complaints. And so there, they wanted to make it difficult for districts to do that. So rather than you authorizing me once annually to deal with that, and we would have Bob Brenza as our legal counsel do that, now those complaints have to be brought before you, um, at a board meeting, and you have to approve them for that to happen, so.
Okay.
That's kind of the gist of that.
What policy number? What policy?
Uh, sixty-two forty. Yeah, sixty-two forty. Which is, you know, unfortunate, because that really was not the, uh, not the way that, we've, we've not had any issues, I think, up to this year and all the twenty-eight years that, uh, we've done it the way we've done it, and so, um...
So next year, we may have to hear those if they come.
You will, you will have to hear, you actually have to, to see us bringing the complaint forward for you to, to actually authorize that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Something else Jim and Beverly get to miss.
Yes.
All the fun.
Yes.
It's not, nothing really's gonna change. I mean, you're still gonna, I mean, you have an internal process, you're just adding another step.
Yes, but I think the hope was that, uh, first of all, it would make it difficult because school board, uh, you know, a lot of school boards only meet once a month. Um, you know, and so there is a statutory requirement. You only have a certain number of days to respond to these. So just to try to make it difficult for boards to react, because, you know, a lot of times, we're not very nimble in trying to do that. And so that way, I think the hope was that we wouldn't be able to, to respond and do things in a timely fashion.
Well, I think you could just call a special meeting with as little as three board members, right?
We would do that here, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Absolutely.
That you don't have to be.
That you don't have to be.
Oh.
Which is why.
Is that how this works?
Which is why he suggested that.
That's how this works, Jim, yes.
No?
Um, I would like to pull Policy Zero-One-Four-Two out of the mix so that we can discuss it as a board. We have not had the opportunity to do so yet. Um, right now, this policy is called Qualifications, and it is one sentence. It reads, "Each member of the board shall reside in the territory composing the district and meet all other required qualif- qualifications as specified by law and courts of competent authority." And we haven't had a chance to discuss whether we think that is sufficient or whether we think that people running for board should live in the district for a certain period of time.
Yeah, I, I think that this is worth us doing some research on, because A, I don't want to put because A, I don't want to put a policy in place that is a violation of the law. I would like to perhaps survey some neighboring districts to find out what their... the duration, I think we're really talking about, for how long do you have to live in the district in order?
To run for school board.
I just, I don't know, but if there is law on it, then we ought to make sure that we are in keeping with the law. So I think it's important that we pull that out until we have that answered.
I know OSBA had a recommendation on this, and they recommended that we pass something as quickly as possible. That was their recommendation at the time. We've let it go a year now, and I raised it and said we need to get it in there. I understand if you want to look at some other things, but I don't think we should let it linger too long.
Well, we could also pass it and then amend it. And we could change it so that we have it there now.
Do you have to go through another three readings, though? Have you pulled this out?
We would have to go through another three readings unless the board wants to only do one reading.
Although, I mean, also, we've got two years before there's another election.
The lame duck is going to speak. I mean, I think, I mean, I think, just being through this, when you folks were up for election, if you can put a, you have residency requirements, but I do believe, I think the call is simple. You reach out to OSBA, and you ask where their recommendation is. And then you guys decide. I would suspect you're going to want to put a time limit, like, you know, someone has to live in the district with an X amount of...
A minimum, a minimum time.
Like, two years. I mean, it's a decision you guys would have to make.
And I think we need to also check with our legal counsel, which I believe we did check at least at this, on this, but yes. But I know OSBA, I think specifically because of the situation our district found itself in, immediately put out a recommendation that districts pass a policy such as that. And, you know, we've gone two years now, so we need to act on this. Like, if not this, we need, I don't want this going on two more years.
Oh, agree, entirely agree.
So you also may also check with the Board of Elections, because each one of their races, they have got a book and what the policies and procedures of that is, and you'd want that in the book.
Yeah.
So someone doesn't come in.
Absolutely.
Our legal advice was that, if I remember correctly, Paul, was that we could decide whatever it was we wanted. I'm obviously oversimplifying whatever it was that Lindsay wrote.
Yeah, it was a, she did say a board decision on the length of time, yes.
So...
I think that that's, that, to me, just feels like that is beyond our power.
I would think to notify the Board of Elections.
And OSBA.
Yeah. To find out exactly, you know, what the residence.
Well, the Board of Elections needs to be informed of whatever we decide, because they then make sure that future candidates meet that, know of that requirement. But I think, to your point, Dan, we should survey some of our neighboring school districts, see what other people have done, if they've done anything. When I asked around, I didn't get any response.
I know that Mentor has a similar policy. And I've got a friend on their board I've already texted to see.
Ask Mentor, okay.
She's being really not very diligent with getting back to me, I want to point that out.
Well, you're in a meeting. She might be in a meeting, too. Okay.
Paul, this will call for another reading?
Well, a couple...
Can we pull this policy out of today's vote? Is that procedurally possible?
Well, you could do a couple of options. You could, as Dan suggests, pass this, because I know residing in the territory was something that you were really looking for. And then I could research, because I am bringing policies back. You know, we'll bring out different policies in January, and I will start another whole three reading. So you could keep this, because you have it that says, "In the territory composing the district." And then I could bring you back that information if you want to re-read this for another three. That may be your best bet so that you have this, because this is our third reading of this one.
Okay, that makes sense. Then at least we've got something.
Yeah.
And then, as you suggested, we then amend it.
Yeah, so who wants to take the lead on checking with other districts?
I will, I will call around and...
And I'll let you know what I learned.
You'll let me know what you learned from Mentor. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll see what's going on.
I do have a question I think we should talk about a little bit, because it comes in, it's something that we all interact with. So in 9211, District Supported Organizations, Paul, there's on the bottom of Page 1, there's a green highlighted drafting note. So it's related to the idea that board members, employees and board members will not manage or have access to district-supported organizations' funds or serve as a voting member or officer of organizations. And so when I read that, I'm thinking about things like the Heights Schools Foundation. You know, we, so I'm a voting member on, I've been a voting member on their board as a member of the Board of Directors. And so I think we should talk about, you know, there's the Heights Schools.
So we have the option of checking that? And that was a conversation that I had with Paul when we were doing policy review. And because I knew of your case and my case on the Board of...
Reaching Heights.
Reaching Heights. That's why that option is not checked, not chosen, so to speak.
So if you do look at that one, and I think there may be a typo, is it checked on yours when you look in the Board Docs?
It is not.
It is not checked.
Okay, it shouldn't be checked, because that won't be included in the policy.
No, but we talked about this last month, and we talked about splitting that. We talked about splitting it into that you could serve as a voting member, but you would not have access to funds. We talked about splitting that into two separate sentences. I remember this. We had this conversation last month. Am I the only one who remembers that?
No, I recall.
Sorry.
Or did I dream it, that we had this conversation?
Right, the possibility that you're dreaming about school board policy is...
No, we talked about splitting this into two separate sentences, because we did have that situation where, like PTA Council, I can vote on that, but I don't have any access to the funds, nor should I. And we talked about how Heights Athletic Boosters is going to want a board person to be a liaison who, you know, may be a voting member but wouldn't have access to funds.
Okay, so we need to figure out the editing on that.
And then also, you know, we are constantly asked when we do. I mean, when we helped out with the tailgate at the Heights Athletic Boosters, we were the ones taking money when they were for the food.
That's true.
And...
Oh, goodness.
I think that's a different interpretation. I mean, you're not a treasurer, you're not...
Correct.
You're not spending the money.
You're not paying yourself. You're not selling T-shirts that your company produces and making money off that way.
Right.
Can I suggest an edit on here, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we would check this. Additionally, school employees and board members will not manage or have access to district school organization funds, but can serve as a voting member or officer of the organization. Does that capture both of the items you're thinking of?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so is the director, the executive director of the foundation, whose payroll is she on?
Both, I think.
It's either city or county, but...
I believe she's...
Kind of like a consultant.
There, it was both initially. I think it's, I think it's fully in the district. We can check that, but I believe that's the case.
Paul? Does she have a bond?
As an employee, she would be bonded, just like any other district would or employee would. Although I don't think we have bonds anymore. It's more insurance than bonds. We don't carry bonds for any employee.
So I think that's really the only sort of person that's sort of outside that has... that's part of an organization that has funds.
I mean, when you think of who, where does cash pass through? Sports, a lot. And performance, when we're selling, anything you sell tickets to.
Yeah, though a lot of that has become online.
Yeah, but actually, the state just passed law that you have to be able to take cash for everything you sell.
Correct. And to a certain degree, I prefer that, because there's extra fees getting tacked on going to whoever.
And it's just easier. It's easier for families to make a spontaneous decision to come see Sister Act or Adam's family.
Yep.
I think a lot of it is not the intake of money. I think the issue is steering funds to a very close family member to do the catering for something.
Right.
I also would think that with CTE, they do a lot of stuff, too, but I'm not sure, that's ESC, that's ESC payroll, it's not our payroll.
Right, correct.
I think you need to have a lawyer look at that.
I think it needs some more chewing on.
I would, yeah, I mean, I think that's another thing that you're going to want to bring forth in the next three months. Maybe approve this additionally, and then make sure it's correct.
So if we were to approve this tonight, it would not have that statement...
It would not be checked.
Right.
It won't be checked.
As it is now, not checked.
As it is, not checked. And then I can bring it back. You can let me know what options you want me to look into with legal.
Okay.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to approve the reading?
I, motion we approve the readings, the policies.
I second.
Gaynor?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Got one more, Paul.
And then we got one more.
Yeah, I got to push my...
Let me get my notes here, so I don't forget this. All right, Kathan, can you help me out with PowerPoint? All right, well, we're going to move on to the calendar proposals for 2425 and 2526. These are the district calendar proposals. With our district calendar proposals, there'll be no action tonight. This is a first reading. Okay? All right, this slide talks about our Policies and Administrative Guidelines 8210 that govern how we do approve calendars, district calendars. So I'm just going to go through this quickly. Those two links are active. We don't have to look at them now, but feel free to look at our actual Board Policy and Administrative Guideline 8210. At least 30 days prior to adopting a school calendar, the board shall hold a public hearing on school calendars. Today will represent that public hearing. The superintendent shall consider the impact of the proposed changes based on instructional programs, vocational school districts, career tech education, transportation, graduation, those items will be considered. Also, any kind of changes to the schedule and to transport students of our non-public schools will also be considered. After tonight, this will be posted on the district website for 30 days to get community input, so you'll have a chance to give us some feedback. Intended to bore action will be adopted sometime the first board meeting in February. That'll give us more than 30 days. The next slide has our calendar committee. This calendar committee, everyone was invited. We had two meetings. Some people were able to come face-to-face, well, it was virtual, or they were able to respond through email. So everyone was notified of the calendars. Okay, and the two proposed calendars, you'll see it, like I said, our meetings were November 1st and December 5th. The first draft, and there is a link there, that those that are watching at home or at any time, you can see the full calendar. But the 171 days, 182 days for staff in attendance. We have our compensatory days and our holidays. A lot of this is governed by a collective bargaining agreements. And then the calendar for 2526 is very similar, with a total of 192 days, including student days and staff days. When we also look at this, we have to look at the calamity days. And this is broken down in 2425 first, and Sharon Roller, our EMIS specialist, helps us with this. By law, you have to have a minimum requirements of instructional hours based on grade level bands. So K through 6, you need to have 910 hours. Grade 7 through 12, 1,001 hours. So if you look, as we go through the calendar, you'll see that high school will have six days of calamity, 9 through 11, because seniors do get out a little bit early, that leaves them three days. Middle school has eight days of calamity, and elementary school has 22 days. And that's for calendar 2425. And then 2526 is very similar. In fact, it's exactly the same. As you go through the high school, middle school, and elementary school days, you can see the amount of calamity days based on the proposed calendars. Again, this is the first reading, but do you have any questions on the calendars?
So for spring break on the proposed calendar, you don't have to put that in there? Or is that Good Friday?
It's the last week in March.
Yeah, so it is in there. If you look on the 2425 calendar, it is the last week in March going into April. And you'll see it's very similar with the 2526.
And then we assume that graduation would be the Wednesday of the last week of school for both calendars?
And that is based on the high school, that where they find the location and the contracts.
Right.
But yeah, it's usually that time, yes. Okay, any other questions? All right, so we'll put that on the website, and then I will bring you back those responses in February for the final approval of the calendars.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, next, we're going to have Mr. Gaynor's treasurer report.
All right, thank you. I'll just take a minute here to do the three things for the month of December. You're going to see, there's kind of a method to my madness here at the end of it all, although it does speak to your question a little bit.
Promises, promises.
Speak to your question, Molly, about tax complaints and those kinds of things. But, and again, our three things each month is tied to our strategic plan, Goal Five, Objective Three. So the first item we have is the sexennial property reappraisal. So this is happening currently, not something that we've talked about in our three things, because we really haven't had this occur yet. But the fiscal officers are required to reappraise all real property in the county every six years. So the sexennial reappraisal is mandated by ORC, all that good stuff. 2024 is the sexennial reappraisal year. So that began in October of '23 and will conclude in April of '24. And actually, we just got a request from Cogge County. They want to actually hold a community hearing. They're going to hold them all throughout the county. One of them, they want to do it at the high school. So George, I need to forward that to you. So George, I need to forward that to you. Where they want to bring community, the community in to talk about the results of the reappraisal. But this is where they actually have licensed appraisers physically looking at every property in the county and, and performing a reappraisal of, of everyone's property values.
So this is both residential and commercial, or just residential?
Correct.
And does it roll out, is the impact felt universally at the same time, or are they rolling it out by county?
It's typically at the same time because it's all based on calendar year, 24 values. But I think, I think based on the process, some people may come to know what it is or what those increases are at different times based on how quickly the county can turn that around. But that's the way that rolls. So that's happening. But the second thing that I wanted to bring up is the homestead exemption. So again, and we talked about this before in a previous three things, more in terms of rollback, but it's kind of interchangeable, but 12 and a half percent of property taxes are paid by the state. So even when these property values increase, well, I should say, 12 and a half percent has traditionally been paid, you know, the rollback payments were eliminated for any new levy after July of 2013, so. But there is an amount of money that the state does reimburse us. They give the credit to the homeowners, and we pay, we get about $9.2 million per year from the state in reimbursement for property tax, homestead exemption. And then the third thing we have here is that in between those sexennial reappraisals, there is a triennial update. And so, you know, property values are every three years. It doesn't require, you know, anyone to go out and physically look at the property. They kind of do, do it based on sales and do it based on, by area, by city sometimes, and just they do these blanket property tax reappraisals every three years.
And that's usually just a flat percentage that they apply to everything.
It is, correct, and I think in, the last one was in 2021, you'll see there, and I think it was for Cogga County overall, about, it was 11 or 12% increase. Big one. Well, so here's, here's why I bring these three items to you. Is that there, there's gonna be another one. That's, this is also gonna be a significant increase. You know, we know that based on the property tax sales and everyone's home values. And so this is gonna be a, a significant increase, and so the legislators are trying to find ways to mitigate the increases to homeowners. So one of the things that they proposed is House Ball 187, which our professional organizations have been really involved in trying to have us do something about and weigh in on, and we have done that. And, and fortunately, nothing happened with it. We thought that this was gonna happen before they went on break. It didn't, but it's gonna, they're gonna take this back up in January. But what they're trying to do in this latest proposal is expand the homestead exemption. And because part of the homestead exemption, there's a blanket 10% everyone gets. Then you also get 2 and a half percent if you live in your home. So most people, for residential, you're getting your 12 and a half percent. But there's also, there are also additional homestead exemptions if you're elderly, if you're disabled, based on income, you know, there are brackets that you get a certain amount of, of additional tax credit. They're trying to expand that portion so that, you know, in theory, that sounds great. You know, you want your seniors, you want people who can't necessarily afford to pay to have additional property tax breaks. The problem is, they, state doesn't want to pay for it. They want to, they want to split, they want to split the cost of that with us, with the school districts. So they want to provide this additional credit or expand the credit. They only want to pay part of it, and then they want us to pay part of it. So more to come on House Ball 187, but, you know, really the talking points, and this is the one that I wanted to make sure that everyone understands if you hear about it or if our legislators ask anyone about it, is that, you know, that we are asking legislators to amend the bill to fully fund the tax relief. You know, and, and the points we're using, the rainy day fund at the state is currently at a record $3.65 billion. The general fund, general revenue fund for the state, their ending cash balance for fiscal '24 is projected to be $1.7 billion. And that through October fiscal year '24, general fund revenue, tax revenues have exceeded estimates by more than $219 million. So the state is doing well. If they want to provide this to seniors, wonderful, pay for it. You know, and don't, don't try to push that cost off onto the local districts.
But it wouldn't just be the school districts that are affected. It would also be the metro parks, the libraries, everybody else who is relying on real estate taxes.
Well, it's also worth remembering, in terms of the state's rainy day fund, that they didn't dip into, into it during a pandemic. And instead, what they did is they balanced the budget by taking money that was already promised to the schools back. So we know...
What are they doing with all that money?
$2 million to vouchers.
Yeah.
Two, I'm sorry, billion, I, million is a dream come true.
Order of magnitude here.
So, yeah, this is, this is a giant, giant problem. And it's also important for us to keep messaging. So since I work in, in Georgia County, I will say that the Georgia County auditor has done some fantastic messaging about this, you know, getting the community ready for this and educating them preemptively. They've done some, some really good work. And, and in terms of messaging, I think it's important that people also understand that the schools are not getting more money because your tax, because the value of your home is, is, is higher. That was 910?
920.
920. And so we, we need to get ahead, and this is probably something that we need to do, some really intentional messaging around. And, and something like hosting an event at Heights High, which I love because, A, I just love showing off that building and reminding the community what they paid for. But I think that at that event, we, we ought to have some very clear, like a one-pager of, of what this means to CHUH and what it doesn't mean to CHUH.
Well, and, you know, I, I, I think there are a lot of counties that, because there are a lot of districts that are on or under the 20 mil floor, meaning that, that their effective mileage is lower. And if it is, then their increases move with their, with any property tax increase. So for House Ball 920, for an individual homeowner, you know, our property values would go up, but the mileage would go down so that we receive the same amount of money. Property tax owners might be paying a little bit, bit more for inside mileage, but not much. But for these districts that are on the 20 mil floor or under, they are, they're gonna see, bless you, that entire increase. And, and it could be, it's gonna be significant. It's gonna be significant for a lot of homeowners.
Does that impact agricultural land the same way?
It does, yes.
Yeah, that's probably why Georgia County's being very...
Correct, correct.
Intentional.
Yeah, so, but I totally, totally agree with you, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on that to get, to get that set up, but also to get some messaging out in front of that because, as you saw, it's gonna, you know, it'll wrap up in Cogga County in April, and then they'll want to have that meeting probably in, I think she said June, that they wanted to do it. So.
Thank you.
Some more to come, but yes, House Ball 187 is bad. We don't like it.
Well, you know what Police Code 187 is? Murder.
Oh, there we go.
I didn't know that.
I didn't know that.
How do you know this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gainer. Okay, Board President report. I already did it.
Yes, you did.
Any no business? Board committee reports first, if you don't mind. I attended, several of us attended, the annual meeting for Reaching Heights, at which Academy Music and Chrissy Dietrich were honored for their long-term involvement and commitment to the school district and to public education in general. It was wonderful.
It was.
And this is an official APB that Reaching Heights is, the Board of Reaching Heights is officially looking for a new executive director because Krista Hawthorne gave her board notice at the end of this academic year. So anybody who is interested in applying should go do so. That's, that's all I got for committees.
I was not able to attend. The Heights Schools Foundation had a meeting just last week, and it was just that one more thing.
PTA did not have a regular meeting. They had an executive session meeting to go over their bylaws. I did not attend that because I'm not part of the executive committee. And it's not really a board committee, but Molly and I attended a CTE meeting, which was sort of a BAC meeting, not sure it really was. And it was also the, what do they call that? Now I'm blanking out. The CLNA, Community Local Needs Assessment Discussion.
Yes.
And they, it was combined.
It was, yeah, it was two things.
Two things combined into one meeting. Molly and I attended it. There's gonna be a couple other meetings coming up.
One in February and one in April.
April, yeah.
So this is the Business Advisory Committee?
Sort of.
Sort of, sort of. We're not sure how that was.
Are they replacing sort of like the, the catch-all way of doing it as they do today, where they sort of use the ESC's Business Advisory Committee? I mean, are they really trying to create a Business Advisory Committee for the core districts that belong to the CTE consortium?
Well, this was not ESC-driven. It was definitely consortium-focused. It was trying to be several things at once. It was a little confused.
You know, so one of the things that, again, speaking as a lame duck, you really, what this consortium needs is a true Business Advisory Committee that is run by businesses in this area and give our teachers that are in these programs resources to learn more about the fields that they're, that they're providing a certification in. You know, it's easy when you have like an auto tech. It's easy when you have the, the nursing, possibly the pharmacy, but I think some of the other things, it's harder because we really don't have a whole strong set of businesses in a very rural, residential, footprinted district. But it's something that we know other school districts have solved this problem. And it seems to me this consortium needs, needs to figure it out. Now, we really don't have much control of the consortium because it's, it's run by many school districts and just not us.
Yeah. Well, there were a number of people in attendance who were connected to Youth Employment Unlimited and other youth development, workforce development organizations. But there were only a very few number of people who were actual employers, you know what I mean?
Right.
And, and so that's why it was a little hard to pin down the goal of the meeting.
I see.
Any other questions on that? No, any unfinished business?
I would like to let everybody know, if you already haven't, if you, if you don't know, the Parks and Rec Commission in Cleveland Heights, sort of the ad hoc Lake community, along with Davida Russell, came up with legislation to fund, I believe it's $25,000 for...
Up to $25,000, yeah.
Pool lifeguards and the current, and it was supposed to go in front of council, or at least it was anticipated that it was gonna go in front of council.
It was not brought up on Monday.
Yeah, it was taken off the agenda or maybe not put on the agenda. I think we all know that there's some politic going on with that and some resistance, it appears. But I do think that this district, again, speaking from a lame duck, needs to be vigilant and basically say, hey, look, the pool is hot. It's open. It doesn't cost us anything for you to use it when it's not being used.
Yeah.
It was built for the community. We don't have a rec department. The city, you have a rec department, and it's, it's a net zero cost. I mean, there's, yeah, you may have to pay, foot some money for some lifeguards, but you sell pool passes to cover that cost, which is just, in my eyes, a no-brainer to do. So, but there appears to be resistance. I would, I intend to be at the city council meeting when it actually does get proposed. So we'll see, and, you know, someone mentioned that they're trying to get it on the agenda for January, but everything is sort of unknown at this point because I don't think, I mean, there's gonna be a new president of council that sets legislation. But I mean, they're, they're, they're letting the season run away from them.
Right.
And I think maybe intentionally because they don't want to do it, which just baffles.
Which is really unfortunate for the community members who want to use the pool in the winter. And guess what? Winter's here.
And we're for, I mean, the, the simple truth is, we're forcing our community to leave the community to go swim when we have a pool...
Right, people driving all over the place.
That the community has already paid for and that has been available to our residents for many years. The model exists. The model works.
Well, yeah, I don't understand why we can't, why, why we collectively, when I say we, the city and us, you know, don't just go back to the agreement we had that we were using that was working perfectly fine prior to COVID.
Yep.
Where the city funded the guards, the cost for the passes covered the insurance, and it was easy.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think it needs to be said, we don't charge the city for this because the pool's already up and running. I mean, it's paid for, for our use already, so it doesn't, there's no rent?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how, how you politicize the health and wellness of your community as an elected leader and sleep at night. So.
It's beyond infuriating.
Let's think happy thoughts and hope that we figure that out.
Hope that in January.
We will work this, they will work this out. They will, they will figure out how to use a free pool.
Because it can't possibly be that hard, right?
You know, I'm gonna say one other thing. It feels really good to be part of an elected body that is not dysfunctional, that works really, really well. So thank you guys for that, okay?
Thank you. You're probably the most responsible for it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business? Correspondence announcements?
I think we already did that.
We just did the correspondence, yeah.
We started the meeting with that.
Yes.
We had a rant, his rant was...
We should have a standing.
I motion we adjourn.
To adjourn.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you all, and a final good night.
He's gotta call the roll.
Mr. Heinz.
Got one last roll.
One last roll. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes. Thank you.
I was gonna vote no, see you guys.